We're so sorry, we apologize for starting this program late. But all the same, we welcome you all, thank you very much. DC, are we ready? DC, are we ready? Are we ready for change in Nigeria? Change is coming to Nigeria. That I guarantee, change is coming. Without wasting any more time, we're going to start this program right away. I'm going to introduce the moderator, and the moderator is going to take over from me. Today, the moderator for this event is a preacher, he is a journalist, and he's a teacher. His name is Pastor Laolu Akande. Please make your way to the stage, thank you so much, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Var. Once again, we welcome everybody to this lively event. I'm sure that you've heard the story, it's not a real story. God was doing a review, a global review, and presidents of countries were coming up. The president of Iran came up and God said, "Why do you need the nuclear weapon?" The president of the United States came up and God said, "I mean, why are you guys toying with righteousness?" Countries kept coming, the president of, the prime minister of Great Britain came, and God said, "Well, you guys, you used to be the leader of the world." And when it was the time for the president of Nigeria, God just burst into tears. But we are trusting and believing God, that God is going to laugh about Nigeria very soon. If you believe me, say, "I receive it," and I believe it. So tonight, we are starting, we are being a part of the change that many of us have been expecting in our country. And we are very excited, as the diaspora, that we have a ticket that recognizes us, to say that it's important to come and engage us. So because of that, let's just give APC a round of applause. So tonight, we are going to have a town hall meeting, we are going to take your questions. The professor is going to speak, and I'm going to introduce him very soon. But first, we want you to see a short video that defines very briefly the platform on which General Muhammadu Buhari and Professor Yemi Oshibajo will be running. It's a very short video, and after that, we bring the professor. Thank you very much.
A government minister spends 130 million naira on a single flight and 10 billion naira in private jet expenses yearly. The CBN said 20 billion dollars disappeared from Nigeria's federation account. Eight billion dollars stolen in kerosene subsidy funds. 400,000 barrels of oil stolen every day. The list is endless. A government that has squandered over 470 billion dollars earned in six years cannot take Nigeria forward. This must change. The APC will eliminate waste and corruption. All corrupt individuals will face the law. All corrupt officials will have a legal obligation to explain wealth or assets above their salaries. All contracts awarded in the public sector will be publicized for all to see and know the costs. Security, education, healthcare, employment, infrastructure, and relief for our citizens are all possible when we vote in a government that will manage our resources and make Nigeria great. Vote change, vote APC, vote Buhari Oshibajo, act now.
Emeka is eight years old, and will go to bed hungry tonight. BC's parents cannot feed her, so she hawks granola in traffic when other children are in school. Shewo Anodafi, both 10 years old, pick up used plastic cans just so they can eat one meal. Nigeria cannot go on like this.
Came with Prof. from Nigeria and also the members of the APC in US. So first, can the members of APC in the United States just rise up and let's give them a round of applause? Thank you so much for coming, God bless you. Now, the Prof. also came with a number of people from Nigeria that were in his delegation. And we also want to honor them, we want to recognize them. So please, the delegation that came, the high-power delegation that came with Prof. from Nigeria, please, can you rise for recognition also? Thank you very much, please take a seat. So we're going to get right into it, and I'd like to introduce our guest tonight, our very special guest, the vice presidential candidate of the APC. And before he comes, we all know that he's a pastor, he's a law professor, he's a senior advocate of Nigeria. He was the Attorney General of Lagos State for eight years. He had served in the United Nations, African Union, and several other important posts. Now, according from The Guardian of January 15, this was what he said about Prof. He said, "Professor Yemi Oshibajo is about one of the best public officers that have been produced in Nigeria since 1999." I think that's a good place to clap. And I don't want you to just take what The Guardian said on the face of it, there's evidence. Talking about corruption, there's been so much debate in our country. Is stealing corruption? You know that somebody said that stealing is different from corruption. There have been quite a lot of rhetoric on how to deal with corruption. Somebody said that, "Look, we need to have machines in place, we need to have, we have to build the software." Now, Professor Yemi Oshibajo has dealt with the issue of corruption. In 1999, when he became the Attorney General of Lagos State, he conducted a survey. He spoke to lawyers, people who go to court to argue before the judges, and said, "What is your opinion? What is the level of corruption in the Lagos State judiciary?" The result came back that 80% of judges in Lagos State in 1999 were corrupt. That was in 1999. So what did he do? He started to look at the whole situation. Why is it that judges are corrupt? He found out that they were poorly paid. They found out that some judges, after they have served and retired, they have no home of their own. In fact, there was a particular case of a judge, after serving and retiring, that was living in a boys' quarters in Lagos. So Professor Oshibajo started a program. They revealed the condition of service for the judges, increased their salaries, decided that once you are a judge, you will have permanent housing. That means the day you become a judge, you will get a house that you will own for life. Put a lot of things together, and then told the judges that it is time to clean up house. No more corruption. And then those who continued, it took them to court, they were prosecuted, judges were prosecuted. Now, this is the trump of the story. In 2007, when Professor Oshibajo was living as Attorney General in Lagos State after eight years, he conducted another survey. "Has the lawyers, what is the level of corruption in Lagos State judiciary?" The result was zero. I thought you are going to give a better round of applause for that. The truth of the matter is that if there is no consequence to corruption, it will lead to impunity, and then we'll be trying to differentiate between stealing and corruption. Professor Oshibajo has proved that we can deal with the issue of corruption. And that is why tonight, it is such an exciting opportunity for us to be able to interact with him. In 2012 December, the Nigerian Lawyers Association in New York, they honored Professor Oshibajo with the Justice and Law Award. And when he was responding to the honor, this was what he said. He said, "Change," listen carefully, "change requires one person at the top who is able to stay the course." His exact words. Said, "Change requires one person at the top who is able to stay the course." He went on to say, he said that nonetheless, Nigeria is at the threshold of something significant. There is so much that our country can be. He said that in December 2012 in New York. And now, it's very close to getting the opportunity to actually bring that to pass. So I'd like us to welcome Professor Oluyemi Oluleke Oshibajo to the stage. Let's do better than that, he flew all the way from Lagos just for this. And he's going to give us his opening address.
Thank you very much, thank you everyone, please sit. Thank you so much. After an introduction like that, I must make sense here, I must make some sense. I'd like to thank you all for making our time to come here today. And I know that most of us are committed to seeing some change in our country, some difference in the way that our country is run, for those of us who are Nigerians. And those who are not Nigerians here obviously want to see Nigerians happier and feeling better than ever before. There is no question at all that our country is in need of change, and everything points to the fact that the way that our country is being run at the moment, that change becomes more pertinent, more urgent by the day. We know, of course, and I'm sure that many of us know, that our country of 170 million people has 110 million extremely poor people. And when you talk about extreme poverty, you are looking at those who can only afford or cannot afford more than 200 naira a day to feed themselves and, in many cases, their families. That is an extremely poor person, and there are 110 million of them, and that number continues to grow. And of course, from that number, you find that practically every other human development statistic points to some depressing situation or the other. Healthcare, for example, 55,000 women die every single year. 55,000 Nigerian women die every single year from maternal-related ailments alone. Just ailments related to prenatal lack of care or postnatal lack of care or death during childbirth. That's just women. 110,000 children die of diarrheal diseases alone, just diarrheal diseases, every year. Infant mortality is, we're top three in the world. That's death between the ages of zero and five for children. Everything that you look at, all the human development indices show that because of the level of poverty that there is, living in Nigeria and living and working in Nigeria and trying to exist in Nigeria is a precarious thing indeed. And that is so big simply because we do not have government that is taking the issue seriously at all, and secondly, corruption, I'm going to talk about that. We know, of course, that jobs, I mean, many of us have heard the statistic, 80% of graduates have no work at all, have no jobs. And we continue to turn out these numbers regularly. We're looking at 4.5 million joining the job market again this year. Another 4.5 million people who are trained to some extent, who need jobs but have no jobs. Literacy is, and of course, the whole educational system is in chaos. 10.5 million children are out of school, don't go to school at all. 35 million Nigerians cannot read or write at all, and that number continues to increase. In the 60s and 70s, the way that literacy was going, we were almost certain that by the end of 1990, all Nigerians were literate by all of the indices that we had. But we've lost hold, we've lost traction completely, and everything seems to be unraveling. A lot of what we're talking about, a lot of the problems that we're talking about are associated with misgovernance. In the past 15 years where we've had the ruling party in power, but also in the past six years, the present government has rarely, practically, taken Nigeria on a fast, the fastest possible retreat that I think any country could have gone through. And largely, this is on account of corruption, largely on account of corruption. The truth of the matter is that corruption is possibly Nigeria's biggest problem. General Buhari was saying the other day, that if we don't kill corruption, corruption will kill us as a nation. And that is as true as it gets. It is true that corruption is the single most important problem that we have. If you look at the figures also, it is frightening. At some point, someone was, the CBN governor, the former CBN governor, spoke about missing funds. He said 20 billion funds, 20 billion US dollars was missing. Then he said 12 billion, he said, "Okay, some part of it could be accounted for." But at some point, we settled for about 12 billion US dollars that was supposed to be missing. But to describe it perhaps, to put it more accurately, 12 billion US dollars that was unaccounted for. 12 billion US dollars that somehow, you know, found its way into, found its way without appropriation to somebody's expenditure and all of that. So clearly, if somehow you can make 12 billion disappear, you know, it's extremely difficult to hold you accountable for anything else. We had the petroleum subsidies scam, kerosene subsidies scam, 7 billion US dollars, completely unaccounted for, 7 billion US dollars. At some point, the excess could account, 1 billion US dollars escaped from there as well. And no accounting for it. Now, this is a country where, as I've said, 110 million are extremely poor. And the main resource, 75% of our earnings as a nation comes from oil, comes from this source. And it is from this fund that all of this is missing. If you look at the, if you look at what has happened to us in the past six years, in 2007, 2008, just to put this in perspective, the oil prices stood first at about 1.47, which was the highest, and then crashed to 38 dollars a barrel. But as of 2008, we still managed to have 62 billion US dollars in external reserves, 2008. But from 2010, 2011 to 2014, we had the highest oil prices in the history of the oil industry across the world. Oil prices were going between 100 and 115 US dollars. External reserves in Nigeria dropped to 32 billion. So when oil prices stood at 38 dollars a barrel, external reserves were 62 billion. And oil prices consistently for almost five years were over 100 dollars, external reserves actually crashed. So if you look at the graph, there's a huge hole, a hole that cannot be explained by anyone, between 2011 and 2014. And this is the kind of thing that the country has to contend with, a government that does not hold itself accountable in any way for the way that resources of the country simply disappear into thin air. 400,000 barrels of oil are stolen every single day, 400,000 barrels of oil. To put that in context, Ghana, which also now is an oil-producing country, does 120,000 barrels of oil a day. We somehow did find that 400,000 barrels disappears and is not accounted for, certainly doesn't come into government revenue. So the truth of the matter is that unless we deal with corruption, unless we deal with it, unless we stem that tide of corruption, very little else can be done. Of course, everybody knows, every Nigerian knows that our currency is crashing every day. Five months ago, the dollar to the naira was 1.65 naira to the dollar. Today, it's about 2.20 naira to the dollar. Now, that's one of the sharpest drops ever. Of course, we've devalued twice now in one shape or the other, and the fall continues. The reason why the fall continues is because our external reserves simply can no longer defend the naira. We just don't have enough to defend the naira. And everybody who's watching this closely knows that in another month or two, the naira is going to fall even more. We certainly need to do something about our country, we certainly need to do something, especially about transparency, about accountability, and about corruption. If we don't, we're on the risk that the country will plummet even further, that poverty will increase, insecurity will increase, unemployment will increase, despair will increase. Something really has to be done about the country. And that's why we've been talking about change, that change is absolutely important. It's not just a slogan, it's about rescuing our nation from the clutches of a group of people who have no understanding and no care whatsoever about the future of the country. And that is, and that is a very serious thing indeed. Everybody agrees, even General Buhari's worst enemies agree, that he is a forthright and honest person and one who will stand up and fight corruption. Everybody agrees. And this really is the problem, this is the problem. Because it is clear to all that he will fight corruption, the big fight against General Buhari taking over power today is not about some of the stuff that propagandists perpetuate. They say, "Oh, he will Islamize Nigeria," because there's no record of that. The question is that these individuals who are in the ruling party today do not want to be held to account. Corruption simply wants to go on unabated in Nigeria. And the reason why there is such serious opposition and why this is such a serious fight is because they simply do not want to be held to account. Nobody who, if you look at the figures, if you look at the statistics, who has done this much to a country would want to be held to account. And that really is what this is about. But the most important thing is that the APC offers a different direction for the country aside from controlling corruption. That different direction is in every aspect of, every aspect of our economy, every aspect of our lives. First, we must begin by stemming the tide of corruption, by dealing with the issue of corruption. Two things that we need to do. The first is that leadership must exemplify what it preaches. If leadership does not exemplify what it preaches, then all of this will be futile, there'll be no point. So the leader, the first, the number-one person, and his cabinet and government must exemplify all of these anti-corruption, transparency, accountability, and everything we're talking about. Secondly, people must be held to account. At the moment, there's complete impunity, and that's what's going on in the country. No one is held to account. Everything that we've spoken about has gone before the National Assembly. There are reports on the kerosene subsidies scam, on the petroleum subsidies scam, on missing funds. There are reports on practically everything, it's gone to the National Assembly, been debated, names have been mentioned, actual people, actual places, everything is on record. But nothing is being done, and that is exactly the problem, because you can get away with it. So we must establish a regime of consequence for corruption. We must start by saying to everyone, there will be consequence for corruption. So when we're able to, of course, that's the first stage. The second is that we need to deal with the critical issues that concern us today. One is poverty, and of course, all of the implications of that for our people. That involves taking some very hard decisions. For example, some of the big social programs that we have, some of them are controversial for those, especially those who believe that government should take its hands completely off the economy, or those who believe that social programs are no use. We have taken the position that while being a business-friendly economy, a business-friendly government, looking at how to deal with the economy and encouraging the private sector, we also believe that we must deal with the questions of poverty by direct government intervention. Now, that direct government intervention sometimes makes the APC look like a left-of-center type of party, which probably is right. But we have no apologies for saying that we must have direct intervention to deal with issues of poverty. One of the direct interventions, the one that's created a bit of controversy, is our conditional cash transfer scheme. Now, the conditional cash transfer is a scheme that's been practiced elsewhere, especially in Brazil, where there was an attempt to take people out of poverty in large numbers. What it involves is giving a stipend every month to the poorest people in the country. Now, we're looking at the poorest 25 million for a start, and giving 5,000 to 7,000 naira per month to the poorest women in particular who have their children enrolled in school and whose children are in immunization, who are in the immunization exercise. So we do, so the reason why it's called a conditional cash transfer is because to take the money, you must satisfy two conditions. You must have children enrolled in school, in the public school system, and they must be received, they must be participating in immunization. So we achieve three things. One, we put money in the hands of the poorest so that they can do some small business or feed, do things for themselves. But more importantly, we ensure that they have children in school, and we ensure that their children are also being taken care of in immunization and healthcare. Because those are public programs that are already paid for. And so we're able to deal with infant mortality, and we're able to deal with school enrollment at the same time as we give their mothers money. Now, that scheme is bound to cost a bit of money. At some of the estimates, we're looking at 1.35 trillion naira. And we think that it is feasible to do, especially if it's phased over a period of time. And we think that we can do this if we're able to make substantial savings even by just plugging leakages alone. But we might be able to talk in some detail about actual costs and what to do. But those are some of the big social programs. In terms of employment, we're looking at increasing, first of all, increasing our capacity industrially and commercially, but that is a power problem as well. Because, as you know, we have a major problem with power in Nigeria. So increasing industrial capacity, even increasing commercial capacity, has that very big problem. Everyone who is familiar with the Nigerian situation knows that it will cost you an extra 40%, you know, just to do any business because of the cost of diesel, the cost of power in Nigeria. So for many, you know, expanding their businesses is a big problem. Even coming into the market at all is a big problem because of the power situation. We intend to resolve that, and maybe I'll have time to talk about that during question time. But we must resolve that to be able to improve our industrial capacity. But in terms of the emergency, we believe that we must deal with unemployment as an emergency situation, especially with the numbers I've given you about unemployment, graduate unemployment, even those who are not graduates, and the kind of huge unemployment we have out there. So one of the things that the APC is committed to is in direct creation of jobs as an emergency measure. 20,000 jobs per state backed by the federal government in every state. We intend to do that, of course, over a phased period, but we think it's important for government to directly create jobs in order to at least, in order to ameliorate what really is a situation that is getting out of control every day. And of course, because of youth unemployment, you have the insecurities that we have here and there, not just Boko Haram, but insecurity in many of the urban centers. And of course, with young people out of work, doing nothing, it just increases the opportunities for misbehavior and for antisocial behavior. So those are, you know, some of the issues that we need to, we are going to look at in terms of job creation. I hope I'll have time to elaborate when we get to question time. I hope I have time to elaborate when we get to question time. We're of course looking at education, healthcare as well. Education, especially relevant education. And I hope I also have time to elaborate on that. Agriculture are some of the big areas that we're looking at and for which we think we can provide answers. I hope during the interactive session, we'll get an opportunity to look at some of this in a bit more detail. Thank you very much.
Like we said, we're going to make it interactive here. And, but before we start, we want to have a three-minute comment from the leader of the APC right here in the United States, Mr. Delay Alade, who is also in New York, John. Please come up. Let's give him a round of applause. He's the leader of APC in the U.S. He's going to speak for just three minutes quickly. And then we turn it to question and answer. That was a very nice opening remarks. I've made some points and there are quite a few issues that we're going to be following up. Let's make Mr. Alade and his team welcome one more time. He's going to talk to us for three minutes. Thank you, sir.
APC. APC. We thank our Lord Jesus Christ for using his platform this evening. And I thank the General of Asia of the Redeemed Church, our Papa, Pastor Dr. Adeboye, for what God is using him in the Redeemed Church. And I most profoundly thank the pastor of this church, Pastor Gandhi, for being the brain behind what we are doing today. We appreciate him so much. We were impressed when we entered this church this morning. And we're so happy and that we believe that God will continue to use him for his kingdom and to win people to the kingdom of God. And we thank the leaders of APC who through their hard work and sacrifice gave us a platform, the APC platform that we have today. I sincerely thank Ashwadu Bola Tinobo, General Muhammadu Buhari, Dr. Onu, Shimbisi Akondi and other leaders who through their hard work were able to form APC today. And I thank my leaders, my members from across the United States. Dr. Dada from Houston, Mr. Masha and Mr. Jafodjo from Atlanta, Chief Maloku from New Jersey, Mr. Olawale Ebitomi from Chicago and others, I have Alaji Famoide, Andy Adesoye and our Deputy National Chairman from New York. We thank you so much and our members in New York and in Maryland, we thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alade. Let's give him a round of applause.
Please, if you want to join APC, the information will be, will be on the screen. It's the platform of change. General Mano Buhari and Professor Yemi Oshibadjo. They understand the roadmap to Nigeria greatness. Please support this change. Change does not come on the platform of God. We have to work and fight for it. Please call your, your family members, your friends in Nigeria to go out on March 18th to vote for change. We cannot afford to sit down at home and I expect other people to do this for us. We all have to be part of this change. Otherwise, it will not happen. We have to come out and fight for it. We have to take it. We're in the United States today because many people lost their lives. They gave the supreme sacrifice for us to be able to sit peacefully and enjoy what is in this country. We have to do the same thing for our country.
Absolutely.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Another round of applause for APC leaders and all the members of APC that are here. Thank you very much. Let's make him quite welcome. They came all the way from across the United States. Thank you very much. Let's, let's keep appreciating them as they go back to their seats. Thank you very much. So we're going to go into a very quick, what I call a light round with Prof, you know, based on his opening speech. I'll just ask some direct questions and we answer quickly. And then we turn it to the, to the audience. Prof, just tell us straight out, is General Muhammadu Buhari an Islamic extremist?
No, he's not. And I think the evidence points to the fact that this is pure propaganda and that he's not an Islamist extremist in any way. In the first place, many of us know that as military head of state, where he, when he was military head of state for about two years, at the time he had absolute power, could do what he pleased. Not only of the nineteen states at the time, eleven of the governors he appointed were Christians. Of the ministers that he appointed, over seventy percent of them were Christians. What is more, he could have joined the organization of Islamic countries. He was under pressure at the time to join because of some of the financial benefits that could come from joining. He refused to join. Categorically said then that Nigeria, being a multi-faith country, cannot join an organization that is for Islamic countries. And he refused to join. It was only in, when he was in detention, after he was overthrown, that General Babangida joined the OIC. And of course, besides, it's also evident from everything. I mean, the Maitatsine was a, was an insurgency much like Boko Haram, an Islamic insurgency much like Boko Haram. He was the one who coiled it while he was head of state. So I think that a lot of this is propaganda, a lot of those who work with him, closely with him. As you see, as you keep saying, my steward, his steward that is, his driver, his bodyguards, all of these people who work for him, his domestic staff are Christians. And he says, "Look, if he hasn't managed to Islamize those who even pays, how is he going to Islamize people like me and all the other people?" You know, so I think it's just, you know.
And, and being a law professor, let's assume that somebody who is, who has an Islamist agenda becomes the president of Nigeria. Does the Nigerian constitution give allowance for such a manipulation?
Does Nigeria, you mean to?
I said, let's assume.
Yes.
That somebody who has an agenda to Islamize or Christianize Nigeria becomes president. Does the Nigerian constitution, you are a law professor. Does Nigerian constitution allow such an agenda?
No, 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 it'd be extremely difficult. I mean, if you want to Islamize Nigeria, Nigeria's constitution actually provides that there shall be no state religion. It also provides for freedom of conscience and freedom of religion as fundamental rights. So assuming that anyone were to wish to Islamize or Christianize the country as the case may be, he would need eighty percent of the National Assembly voting to do one or the other. That's, and that's a first stage. So he needs eighty percent of the National Assembly voting to Islamize or voting to Christianize as a first step. Second step, he needs two-thirds of the thirty-six state houses of assembly. So he needs twenty-four state houses of assembly saying, "We vote to Islamize or we vote to Christianize." So there are two levels. First level, you need eighty percent of the National Assembly, that's two houses, Senate and House of Reps. Then you need twenty-four state houses of assembly. I mean, that's just, it's, it's almost impossible.
Absolutely.
I, I don't think that could ever really happen.
Now, I'll ask you one more question and then we turn it to the audience. What is your government, by the grace of God, when you win next week? Buhari and Oshibadjo. What are you going to do to bring back the Chibok girls?
Yes. Well, I think the main, main issue with the Chibok girls is a matter of prioritization. I, I don't think that the issue has been prioritized by the government, politicized it. I mean, they, and they continue to politicize it. And I think it's important to understand that if you want to solve the problem, you have to politicize it. You have to, you have to ensure that you prioritize it. For us, it will be priority. I mean, I do not think that it's an issue that should be toyed around with. It is something that we have to watch day by day, deploying the resources to look for those girls and to measure our success day by day. I don't think, you know, frankly, I, I, I'm just upset just thinking about it. I mean, I have two daughters. I cannot imagine that one of my daughters would be missing for a week, for a day, two days, and the reaction of the government would be that we don't even think they are missing. We don't even know where they are and all of that. I think that, I think that it is, it assaults, I think the whole thing assaults our psyche, assaults our humanness. It, it's just, it's just so bad. And I think that that's why Nigerians keep calling for the return of these girls. So for us, it will be priority from day one. We'll be looking at what to, on, on a daily basis, gathering the intelligence. We don't know what the intelligence is today. I have no access to it. We don't know what's going on. But that will be priority for, for a Buhari-led government. And it's said so several times that there is no reason at all why we would, we should not do everything that is possible to make sure that those girls come. But it's a matter of putting it as pri, making it our priority and that's what we're going to do.
Just to follow up on that, so a former president said that the, the current government actually wasted eighteen days wondering whether it was actually true that those girls were abducted. How do you respond to that?
Well, it's true. I, I think it's true. What Topason just said is absolutely true, that they wasted so much time, you know. And part of the reason why even the Boko Haram insurgency has, has become so intractable is because of the time that was wasted politicizing it. I mean, if you, if you recall, it started with the then NSA, the National Security Advisor, General Azazi of, of President, of President memory, saying that the reason why Boko Haram was spreading all over the place was because of the internal squabblings within the PDP. So while the PDP was still arguing with itself, the, the president himself said that there were, there were Boko Haram people within his cabinet, you know. But then when the APC was formed, by the time the APC was formed, they then said, "Well, it's the APC that is actually responsible for Boko Haram." So all of that business of just trying to politicize it, make light of the matter and all of that is why the Boko Haram took on, you know, the, the kind of, the, the, the kind of strength that it didn't have before and the kind of traction it didn't have before and spread and it's become such a, you know, it's, it's become such a problem. So I think that that business of just trying to politicize everything and trying to divide the country along religious lines, along ethnic lines, is what has led us to where we are today. I mean, if you make out that a party, they try to suggest, for instance, that the APC is an Islamic party and all of that, you know, as if, you know, you don't have Muslims and Christians in every party, you know, and all of these kinds of trying to play along the false lines of Nigeria. That's why, that's why we're where we are today and it's a very unfortunate thing indeed.
Thank you very much. Let's give him a round of applause. So we're going to take two questions, one from this side, one from that side. I'm going to take a gentleman from this side and a lady from this side. And then you'll make your questions very, very short. Yeah, okay, the brother there, yeah. Yeah, please step to the mic and then, and then the sister, yeah. A sister here and a brother there. No, I'm, I'm in the, the brother here, yeah. Yes, please step, step to the mic. So let's take the lady first, make the question very short. Introduce yourself and then make your question very short. And then the, the brother, the brother wearing the dark, the brother wearing the dark suit. Well, okay, the brother wearing the dark suit for us and then you can stand behind him if, if you come back. The brother wearing the, that's what I, I generally think. So we take the lady, please mention your name, make your question very, uh, uh, direct and quick and then we go to the gentleman. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bola Awosika Uyileye. Welcome, Prof. As you can tell, all of us are interested in the affairs of Nigeria. I am one of those who left Nigeria planning to spend only four years out of Nigeria. That was in nineteen eighty-five. I am still here today. My, and some of us, we all want to go back. We're all interested, we're connected, we want to go back. But while we're here, my question to you and to the Buhari-led government is this. One of the unfulfilled promises of the Jonathan administration is that the likes of us would be able to vote in the affairs of Nigeria. My question to you, sir. My question to you, sir, is this. While we have, we're not going to be able to cut the umbilical cord that binds us to Nigeria, but we still want to be able to vote. What will your government do so that the likes of us can have a meaningful impact in our country? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The gentleman, yes?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Professor Wali Awodeya. I was in Baltimore and I asked a couple of questions, but I'm going to summarize my question into one now. The professor is a luminary, is a lawyer. And when he answered my question the other time, he referred to legal terms and what the courts have done in Nigeria to bar the military from intervening or being used to conduct this election. And I asked that what if they are planning another Ekiti scenario for this election? We like this platform. We hope you succeed. As a matter of fact, we wish to call you His Excellency in two weeks. But the people you are dealing with do play rough. So what are we going to do?
All right. Thank you, sir. I, I'll take the other gentleman and then Prof will respond.
My name is Stephen Olawale Fashaklin. I happened to come into the United States a few weeks ago and I was part of a June twelve struggle. My question is this. What is the government, what is your party doing, sir? To make sure that what happens to June twelve does not happen to nineteen, I mean, two thousand and fifteen? Because we knew definitely you are going to win. And that's why they postponed it and postponed it and postponed it. What they are doing, they are planning, what is the, is the party doing to make sure June twelve, the door is fit itself?
All right. So, so let, let's, let's allow Prof to take those three questions and then we, we come back to you. Over to you, sir.
Voting by people in the diaspora, some form of absentee voting is obviously one thing that we in the APC agree with. But we also believe that we need an APC majority in the National Assembly to be able to pass it into law. But certainly, we agree with it, we've been in support of it. And we believe that for most people who are outside the country, as a matter of fact, some of the polls of people done outside the country would have won the elections long ago if, 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 if the voting was done. And, and that's, and that's the way it is. And it's because people outside the country can look at things very objectively and compare their own situation and circumstances. And compare, and compare their own situation and circumstances to what is going on at home and see that, and see what good government can, can, can do. So we are completely convinced that diaspora voting or absentee voting is absolutely right, the right thing to do. And we hope that a majority in the National Assembly, an APC majority, will be able to pass this into law. The Ekiti scenario which you described is, for those who do know, who may not know, recently, there were a tape, a tape recording has been on the internet which shows how government ministers in the ruling party connived with the most senior military person in charge of operations in the Ekiti elections to rig the elections. And this was secretly taped, a secretly taped recording which showed how they planned to arrest leaders of the APC twenty-four hours to the elections and they effected it and other things that they planned to do, which clearly showed that there was connivance between the ruling party and the candidate, even the candidate of the ruling party and the senior military and security officials who conducted the election. Now, that is something that we've been fighting against and we've been saying will not be acceptable. I'd said earlier that the Court of Appeal in Nigeria has ruled in our favor saying that the military should not be deployed to the, to polling booths and for election purposes. The reason is that we strongly believe that senior members, some senior members of the military... have decided that they will protect and work with this administration. And that's what we've been seeing, especially with senior members of the government. The Minister of Defense, Minister of State for Defense at that time, Minister of State of Police at that time and several others who ganged up and connived with the candidate of the ruling party and senior officials of the military. Now, all that we can do is what we're doing. Namely, we've gone to the courts. We have an order of a court which we expect will be complied with. We have been speaking out to members of the party, speaking out in the press. We've been speaking to our friends in the international community, those who are saying we want peaceful, orderly elections, who want to see this done right and all that. And who are saying that there should be free and fair elections. And we're saying that there are minimum conditions for free and fair election. One of the minimum conditions is that you cannot deploy troops, especially when we have seen what happened in Ekiti and we have evidence of it for the world to see. Secondly, we've insisted on the use of the card reader. This is an authentication device that just shows, that just helps you to show accreditation when you want to vote. You put your card into the card reader and it shows whether it's an authentic card or not. That's all. And the ruling party insists that no, they don't want to use the card reader. And the card reader has been used in previous elections.
I think the reason is because somebody said PVC stands for please vote for change.
That's a good one. I never heard of that before. And I think that really, at the end of the day, that is an absolute essential because otherwise, a lot of the rigging that we fear may take place because you may then have cards that are fake being used. The third thing is that we insist that after voting, because voting is counted at the polling units. After voting, we insist that voters should remain, watch the counting of the votes and hear the announcement of the votes so everyone knows what happened at every polling booth. We have been hearing that they don't want that to happen, that they're saying that voters must leave the polling booths. So these are some of the important conditions that we think will make for free and fair elections. And we've been insisting that our international friends and members of the community, international community should impress it upon the government that those are minimum conditions for a fair and fair election. Aside from that, we've been telling the people, just as it happened in Oshun State, at the end of the day, it's the people who will defend the ballot. It's the people themselves, because the Nigerian people themselves who will do so. A political party can only educate in the way we're educating and we can only encourage in the way we're encouraging. At the end of the day, it is the people themselves, the voter himself or herself, who will defend the ballot, as it happened in Oshun State. The people of Oshun State rose and defended the ballot and that's how come the outcome was what it turned out to be. And it was to every intent and purpose, a fair outcome because the people insisted that they would not go home until they saw everything happen and counted the votes and all that. And that's what happened at the end of the day. So we think that that will be the case. And I think the same is true of what happened with June twelve. June twelve was annulled. The election was free and fair. The party that won actually won, the candidate won. And after the victory, it was annulled. In fact, they refused to announce the results, despite the fact that everyone knew what the results were. But we think that all that we can do is what we're doing at the moment, saying that never again, this will be unacceptable to the Nigerian people. It will be unacceptable to the international community as well. And these are the kinds of things that we're saying. I think that times have changed since nineteen ninety-three. The international community is a lot firmer. The ICC, the International Criminal Court, has somehow weighed in and has said that encouragement to violence and encouragement to disruption may well become a crime or may be treated as a crime. I think that some of the pressure that the international community can bring to bear will help a great deal in ensuring that we don't have a repeat of the June twelve scenario. But any other strategy or strategies, of course, I cannot disclose to the entire world. But I must say that at the end of the day, it's the people who will make a difference.
Thank you very much. Let's give him a big round of applause. Thanks for, I have a question here from Adewale Olasumboy. He's a PhD student from Harvard and he actually identifies himself that is from the state of Oshun. He says that accident occurrences on Nigerian roads are pronounced and they claim on best of lives regularly. How will your government develop an effective and sustainable road infrastructure for Nigeria within the shortest possible time? Now, I also like the sister, the sister who was on the queue here. Where is she? Please put in your question so that Prof can take the two questions at the same time. Yes, please remember to introduce yourself.
Hi, I am Amaka. I am with a Nigerian think tank called the Center for Public Policy Alternatives, based in Lagos. My question actually is related to what you were just talking about. We've heard members of APC say that if APC loses, and I understand that you believe that you will win, but they've said that there will form a parallel government. And I think a lot of people are worried about what that means in terms of violence and insecurity and confusion in Nigeria. And I'm just curious as to what APC, how APC plans to manage post-election scenarios if, for whatever reason, it doesn't win and it believes that it doesn't win because it was, you know, due to unfair practices or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, can I take those two questions quickly?
The road network. In fact, the entire road infrastructure is a very important part of the APC manifesto. And we're looking at actually doing considerable work with the road network and also with rail, transportation generally. But we think that not only will that increase jobs because with us, every single plan in our manifesto has a job creation element. So we think that it's very important, a road network was very important. But funding the road network, we're looking at creation of road bonds, in road infrastructure bonds, where we intend to create the opportunities for investment in roads from the private sector, from individuals also, and to match that with government funds. We also believe that unless we're able to do some PPPs as, you know, public-private sector in building our roads, we may not be able to succeed much. So to some extent, you know, government funding of the road network would be important. But also, we intend to have several PPPs and we intend to fund it, we intend to at least add to funding by road infrastructure fund, a bond, which we intend will be done, you know, as quickly as possible. Some of the scenarios that we've been looking at are tolling, especially with respect to interstate roads. We think that we must introduce tolling in interstate roads, especially for our road bonds, for the road infrastructure bonds. Because we must have a sinking fund for some of those bonds. And tolling would be important, especially for those interstate roads. And for PPPs, tolling might be extremely important, especially, as I said, for the interstate highways. Without extensive road development, a lot of the economic plans and ideas may not happen or may not happen as quickly as we want. So it's a very important aspect of the work that we intend to do. There are several different, I don't want to go into all the details of the several networks that we think are important across the country. But all of this is important for us. The question of introducing a parallel government and post-election, possible post-election crisis and all that. Now, it's important to bear in mind that it is really up to the ruling government, to the ruling party, to ensure that elections are free and fair. And we've made that point repeatedly, that it does not lie in the control of the opposition to ensure free and fair elections. It is up to the ruling party and everywhere and every time that you have seen free and fair elections, you would never find any kind of crisis thereafter. For example, the June twelve elections that we're talking about, there was absolutely no crisis. No violence, nothing, because it was a free and fair election. And free and fair elections always come with very little violence. Now, in the event, and the APC has said, that in the event that there is electoral robbery, that we're robbed of our rightful place, of our victory, that we will establish a parallel government. The details of that, of course, we will speak about only when the time comes. But we will certainly, we will certainly provide a moral alternative for the people of Nigeria. Who will not, we will not, we certainly will not accept.